Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We will get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Sayer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Darrell Hairston is here from Tabernacle Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Would you please stand?
Shall we pray, oh gracious God, for this wonderful day that you have granted to us, and we thank you for the opportunity to exercise a wonderful work that you have granted to us and unfolded to us through our Mayor Cornet. Bless his family, bless every councilperson's family. And oh God, as you unfold the work before them, give them wisdom and clear direction that it would touch every segment of everybody within the community. We pray for the power of collaboration, and we pray as we continue to acquiesce in this city that this city will be blessed with your bountiful blessings and unfold your blessings in the midst of us as we challenge each other to move forward the business of making a difference through the power of collaboration, through the great God who created this wonderful earth. We pray, amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Let me introduce Bob Spinks with the United Way. Bob is here with a special award. Bob, come on up to the microphone.
Thank you. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to do this this morning, and I think we were going to do this a couple of weeks ago, and we just had an opportunity to make it even more clear why this recognition is deserved. We began an award at United Way last year called Friend of the Community. It's designed to recognize those unsung heroes out in the community who do things to help all of us, sometimes in very difficult circumstances. They deliver, they make us safer, they make us a better community, but sometimes they're not as obvious to everybody. And last year, we presented two of those awards to David Barnes and Frank Barnes, our two emergency managers for Oklahoma County and Oklahoma City. This year, I'm delighted to present this to a person who's been actually a friend of mine for about 40 years. We grew up in the same hometown. We're both involved in the scouting program very heavily, and he's gone on to do the work he's doing, and he's on TV more than I am, which is good. I'm happy to accede that to him, and he's been on a lot lately. But we're very pleased to present this year's Friend of the Community to Mike De Giacomo. You know, Mike, I see you on TV. You're ever bit as articulate as you were 40 years ago when we were doing some Order of the Era work together. There's probably a few people who'll know what that is in the room, but it's been a great pleasure for me personally to see you do what you do, and I love the way you have to defend the fact you can't clean everybody's street off, because I have to do that from time to time on other issues. But seriously, you do a great job, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
You bet. And Mike, our thanks to all your crews who've been out in this extremely cold and unseasonably weather, and I hope this is our last winter storm of the year. I think you guys deserve a break.
I agree with you.
All right. We're on to item four of the council agenda. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for both January 19th and January 26th. Item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 12th. We have a motion and a second on item four. Any comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item five. This is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple this morning. Starting on page 17, on page 17, under item 8G1, 8G1A, 11913 Ashford Drive, we ask that be stricken. Will we work that for additional violations? Item G, 600 East Sheridan, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. And item H, 2701 Northwestern Avenue, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then on page 20, under Claims for Denial, Claim 8OH, 8OH, we'd ask for two weeks to follow on that one. Councilman Walters is requesting that. The claimant is actually supervised with OGNB, and he's in Southern Oklahoma, and he's unable to attend this morning's council meeting, so we ask that that be deferred for two weeks, and that will be on February 16th.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances?
That's on there, okay. Also, is that on the front?
That's deferred up front, Mr. Walters.
Thank you.
So it's...
Well, I will recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Ager and OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are four items. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Ager and OC PPA reconvened the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual consideration? Uh-huh. All right, Meg, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Very quickly, I just wanted to mention that Six U is entering into a contract for architectural services with Architectural Design Group for the new public inebriate facility that will be moving to 1940 Linwood Boulevard. So we're very excited to get started on that project and improve the services for those folks that we help through the PIA.
Well put. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, sounds like we're ready to go. Cast your votes. Consent docket passed unanimously. We're on to the concurrents docket. All right, looks like we have 14 items. Any comments or questions on anything on the concurrents docket? Sam? All right, go ahead, Sam. What's that?
So much a question. Could we, this is on the myriad botanical gardens, the beginnings of really the major work on the south side. Just a little further explanation on what this phase, I mean, it says south entry restaurant, cafe. Can we just have a little more enlightenment?
Well, this is, we will.
You know, I guess I didn't, we don't get the concurrents documents.
Yeah, actually, we're having a full presentation on that next week. It's exactly what we're doing with the botanical gardens. There'll be a full, full...
All right. Any other questions on the concurrents docket? All right, let's concur. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, these are items requiring a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward seven. The address is 2624 Northeast 23rd Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential. It would become a C3 community commercial district. Skip?
Yes, Mayor. After much discussion and comments and concerns from citizens in this area, and after a very lengthy period of time in which we've tried to obtain information from the applicant, it is my position that I feel like that in the best interest of those individuals who are concerned, citizens who reside in the area, that we deny the application.
All right.
Second.
Does everyone here wish to speak on this side of item 8A1? Okay, the motion is to deny the application. Any other comment or question from council? All right, a yes vote is to deny. Cast your votes. That item is denied. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward four. The address is 404 Southeast 79th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential. It would become I2 moderate industrial district. Pete?
Is there anyone here to speak in protest of this item? I've looked at it. I'm going to move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A2? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward four. The address is 7500 Southeastern Avenue and also 2700 East I240 Service Road. It's currently R1 single-family residential and I2 moderate industrial, and it would become a planned unit development. Pete?
Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Is the applicant's present, I believe, is the applicant present? The city's the applicant on this case. I guess they're here, then. Actually, I had this one confused with number five. This one is interesting, and it's especially interesting in light of one that's coming up here pretty soon with regard to the application for the schools in western part of Oklahoma City. This is an area that is owned by the school land commission, I believe. Is that right? And it's been zoned R1 for a long, long time, and R1 housing has been built to the south of it. That's correct. And after a long series of meetings with the residential neighbors to the south, we agreed that it was compatible. Now, this is the city's application to zone this property I2 originally, the entire 640 acres, I2. After a long series of meetings with the neighbors, we reached a conclusion that it was okay to zone a portion of it I1 and the bulk of it I2. Now, again, I want to repeat that this was an application on behalf of the city to do this with R1 to the south, and I'm just confused of how the, about, and I'm bringing up a case that's getting ready to happen that's in Councilman McAtee's board, but I'm confused about how the recommendation for the city could be that we can zone this property I2 and it abuts directly residential property, and we can make the argument, and that be the city's position, and yet in this case coming up, the city's position is not going to be consistent with that. And I really have a hard time with that. I'm going to move approval of this because I've worked with the neighborhoods, and they believe it's compatible. This is not the industrial part of the city. This is R1 neighborhoods agreeing that this is compatible. And I'm going to move approval, but I want everybody to remember this, because in a couple of minutes, we're getting ready to talk about another case where our recommendation is exactly the opposite of this. This was pointed out to me by my planning commissioner, who I think kind of led the charge at the planning commission on the other case, and helped me a great deal to negotiate with the neighborhoods. I'm not, if you feel like I'm throwing, you have no target on your forehead today, Bob. I'm just, I am amazed that we would have these two cases on the docket at the same time. One of them initiated by the city and the other one with a totally different kind of objection. I hope it doesn't have anything to do with what part of town it's in. Surely, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a reason. But anyway, I'm going to move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes.
Mayor, could I ask real quick, if the city sent this forward, what is it that we're planning on doing there? I guess...
Well, it's property that's actually owned by the school land commission, and hopefully it will be at some point in time part of that I240 industrial corridor that where the General Motors Plant was located, where Quad Graphics is, where there's a number of...
There's nothing planned there now. We're just getting it ready.
Nothing. We're getting it ready, and this is done in conjunction with the chambers wanting to make sure that there... This would be a very, very, very attractive parcel. It's larger than most, 240 acres of vacant property, so if you had someone come in from out of town to build a big, big, big operation, this would be a really great place to do it. So I don't object to it. I just object to the, I guess I just question the different recommendations based on...
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. White, I would argue that we are very consistent, and what the fact is, is...
I would be disappointed if you didn't argue that.
We have had issues with having industrial land being encroached upon and having limited opportunities for economic opportunities when it comes to Oklahoma City. And so we're trying to, through the Economic Development Trust and through the Chamber of Commerce and others, is to identify some tracts of land that will be out there and available if we have some economic opportunities for Oklahoma City. And this is to zone this, so this would be an industrial tract available for economic development. And in the following case, the thoughts of the city were to protect that industrial tract against encroachment, so you would be eligible for some industrial applications as they come forward. And so I understand what you're saying on that, but I think our, the philosophy on both tracts is very consistent. You may not agree with that, and I understand that the case on Western Heights has got a lot of momentum behind it and such, but that is...
It's not the momentum. I mean, in one situation, I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with an established residential neighborhood, people living in R1 houses in this established residential neighborhood, and we come forward with a proposal that says I2 can go right, 640 acres of I2 can go immediately adjacent to that neighborhood. The plan that the city put forward had no buffering, nothing. It was just 640 acres. Now, the buffering is there now as a result of the neighborhood protests and neighborhood concerns, and it worked very well. And I'm not lamenting that. I'm just saying, I just don't see that as, I see some inconsistency there that I have...
Well, I think our philosophy is getting as consistent. I understand where you're pointing out some inconsistencies. There's always conflict when you have either educational facilities or residential facilities up against residential, or, excuse me, up against industrial. And again, on this one, there was a compromise. A buffer was put in, and they tried to attempt that, and I think the issues on Western Heights will...
Well, I think both of them are going to work out very well, but I just wanted to point out that it seems like to me they got there by two different paths.
I agree with that, but there is a consistency at least in the philosophy to try to protect them.
Would I argue with you really? I mean, seriously, I don't think, probably...
Sounds like we're ready to vote on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward seven. The address is 9725 North Lincoln Boulevard. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become a planned unit development. Skip?
Yes. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against? I haven't received any calls in reference to this project, but I'm very supportive of it. It is North Lincoln Boulevard, and it's a residential district, a single-family, propose to changes to a PUD or a planned, you know, commercial district, and to connect to the continuation of other projects that's in the north quarter of Ward seven. I am thrilled to see some of the technical TNEs that has been addressed in this matter and would strongly support the passage of this as we go forward.
All right, is that a motion? How about a second? Any comments or questions on item 8A4? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is also in Ward four. The address is 6700 Southeast 59th Street. It's currently a PUD, and it would become a different type of planned unit development. Pete?
I think the applicant, representative of the applicants are here on this one. Is that right? I'd like just a brief presentation on it. I haven't had any protest, and I don't have any personal objection to it. I'm just not sure I understand it very well, so...
My name's Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and this is a case where the applicant came and took straight I2 zoning, rezoned it to R1 residential, thinking that housing was going to be the appropriate use for the property, based on what's gone on in the area and based on the development patterns, decided that industrial was probably the better zoning for this area. So when we came back, we coordinated with staff. Staff said do a PUD, make it consistent with the PUDs around it, and so it's taken it back to industrial zoning.
When was the zoning changed to I, to R1?
Approximately three or four years ago, and before that it was I2, straight I2.
I don't have any, just another example of what I'm talking about, though. I move approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second on item 8A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8A6, this is a zoning case in Ward three. The address is 1700 South Council Road. It's currently I3 heavy industrial. It would become a planned unit development. Larry, we have some people that have signed up to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe every, the folks that have signed up are all in favor of this particular application. Could I ask, has anybody signed up to speak against it? Does the city staff want to make any presentation against it?
No, sir.
Okay. Then that being said, I'd like to call the applicant up to just give the council a brief overview of what we're talking about. So, Mr. Box?
Councilman McAtee, thank you very much. Dennis Box, on behalf of the applicant. This is an application that, as you can see by the number of people in the audience, is very important to the Western Heights School District. I will not slow the process down and have a number of people come and speak to you, but I think it is important for you all to understand what has taken place in the past, the recent past, and the opportunities that this is going to provide for the Western Heights School District. Back in '07, August of '07, Bridgestone donated 20 acres to Western Heights for development of school. And subsequent to that, Western Heights ended up with another 40 acres. The line that you see on the map in front of you is a good line of demarcation. To the east of that line will be open space, trails will be utilized, and consistent with what will happen with the landfill when it closes, which, if you'll remember, a lot of time and effort was spent to make sure that that would be also trail systems and park systems, and people could walk through that area. So the trail systems connect up. This will allow Western Heights to have fifth and sixth graders provided on the western portion of this tract. Really, only 15 acres is ripe for development. The rest of it will remain open. And we feel that, from our standpoint, and not to argue with the city manager, but we think that industrial can be consistent with institutional uses. If you look at Oklahoma City as an example, when we made a presentation to the planning commission, we have a PowerPoint, there are 11 schools just in the Oklahoma City School District that butt up to industrial. One of those is Douglas. Douglas is a good example of MAPS money that was well spent. It is a good example of having industrial uses that have budged up on the north side. It has I3, very intense industrial uses on the west side, and yet Douglas is today a shining example of why MAPS has been a success. So we think that from a compatibility standpoint, depending on the location, depending on the site, that schools can provide for a good neighbor. If you look at Western Heights, I think the most important thing that you've got to realize is Western Heights, which came about, the Western Heights School District in 1959, it sits within an industrial district. Industrial has come to Western Heights. They're good neighbors, and they believe that the school patrons that work within those industrial areas go to school within those schools, and so it's a, it's a good cooperative effort. That's why you have two letters of support, one from Hobby Lobby and one from the landfill. So we would ask for your support. Planning Commission, after looking at this, recommended approval, and we think it's a good case, and we'd ask you to approve it, too. If you have any questions, the president of the school board is here, superintendent's here, principals, a number of other people, but that gives you an overview of why we think this is a good location and a good use.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions from the council?
And I know I asked you this earlier, but I'd kind of like to have it in the record, Dennis, if you could answer the question. There's been some discussion that Producers Co-op may relocate out in this area somewhere, possibly. Is the school board, the school fully aware of what that operation may entail, and they're okay with that operation going on close to what would be their new school?
Yes, and I think it is a given. The Co-op has purchased a portion of property. In fact, a few years ago, got a remodeling permit for some of the warehouse area, and we realize that they're going to hopefully come, and we welcome them, and we think they'll be a good neighbor.
I just want to ask one question, and I did get a couple of calls. This is not my, you know, and I've talked to Councilman McAtee, and I got a briefing from him, but what was the, because I got a call from the Co-op attorney. What was the original debate about this then? I mean, I've heard, you know, that there was a concern that, you know, this land was set aside or had been expected to be part of a block of land acquisition for industrial purposes, but from the beginning, why was the issue in reference to the school being there? What was the big concern?
In their letter, they express a concern about making sure that the school was on notice, and that if in the future somebody had a problem with their operations, then they would have been put on notice that they were coming and they were planning on building their facilities in the location. I have talked to that same lawyer, and he indicated that from a legal standpoint, that was his position, just make sure everything's on the record. With regard to this tract, and not to get into a philosophical debate, but I think we have to recognize that there's only 15 acres that can really be developed on this property. So we don't believe it's going to have a negative impact, and if you look at the other schools that Western Heights has in the district, they are close to industrial. So that's our patrons. That's the schoolchildren that go to the schools, and so we think that the cooperative effort that has taken place in the past will continue in the future.
All right, Larry?
Any further questions? Seeing none, I move for approval.
Okay. We have three people that have signed up to speak. Looks like this is going to turn out the way you'd hope, so I'm not going to call on you unless you raise your hand right now and insist on coming to the microphone. All right, looks like we're ready to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item 8A7 is a zoning case in Ward one. The address is 1224 North Council Road. It's currently a PUD, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Gary?
Is there anybody signed up on this? Do we have anybody here to speak against this? And all the TE's been agreed to? I move approval.
We have a motion and a second on item 8A7. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A8 is in Ward four. The address is 10208 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Pete, there's a lot going on in Ward four today.
Is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
No one's signed up.
No one's signed up? Is the applicant present? I don't see anyone that's here to protest, so I'm going to move approval. I've looked at it. It looks good.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item 8A8. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is some clarifying language about site distances.
Mayor, if you would like, I can combine 8B and 8C. No?
Okay. Item C is to clean up the zoning ordinances.
8B, there were a number of different changes in there that the Development Services Department and the Planning Department have worked on in relation to the site distance triangles. There is a reference back to Chapter 59. That was not in there previously. There are other amendments that relate to notification and citations as well. The other thing with this is that it also addresses changes to the sign regulations in Bricktown. Previously, we had not been able to... Previously, we had not been able to, to advertise parking, either public or private, off-site, so we now are assisting the public, private, the parking situation in Bricktown by allowing off-site signage for directions towards where the parking can be located. And the dilapidated sign notice also had some issues in terms of its consistency with other notification requirements. So, those are all part of the Chapter 3 amendments.
Taking questions, Russell?
I, I can take questions on that, yeah. We, you know, we had, we had, we combined the two together because they're, they're related. We're looking at Chapter 3, 59, and 60.
Maybe you're going to get into this anyhow. I think it'd be helpful if we'd understand with the, with the site triangle regulations, are they clarifying, or are we really looking at some changes to how we address the site angle distances and?
I don't, I don't, my, my reading of the, the ordinance changes doesn't talk about that. It's more a clarification of the process in terms of what, what the notification is, et cetera. I don't know. Bob might know more about that.
This, when we redid the ordinance in 2007, we had, we had a conflict between our sign code and our zoning ordinance with the site distance, the site triangle, and we're, we're clarifying and making them consistent. So, that's really all this change does.
Okay.
Well, are we going to discuss item BNC, or do you want to take them one at a time?
You can, you can take a vote on B. B's, B's pretty separate, really.
Why don't we have a motion on B, then?
I just want to ask a question first. You know, and I, I really think that this whole process, in my opinion, is, is a little bit much for, for us to consume, to come out here and be able to, to dissect this whole amendment process. And, and I, and so my question is going to be maybe elementary, but I think for purposes of people really knowing. The, the area of the sign, and as much as I complain about signage now and getting hardly any response, this whole issue of maintaining the legible and free of damage, deterioration, defacement of a sign, and this is the responsibility of who?
The property owner.
Okay. So, 30 days' notice of a, a, from the zoning department, who issues a citation?
That would be from Development Services.
So, they give a 30-day notice to, to the owner of the property?
Correct.
As a warning? Is that right?
As, as a notice, yes. Not a citation.
And then somebody come back within 30 days to see whether or not it's been correct?
Just to clarify this, typically, we give 14 days on zoning violations, but when we were drafting this ordinance for the dilapidated sign, we felt that it was kind of a special category, so we gave, we felt that they needed 30 days to come into compliance, because that, that gives them adequate time to either fix the sign or remove it, and then after that 30 days, we follow up, just like we do any other zoning violation. And if they haven't corrected it, we can give, issue a citation, or we can extend that time if they're working towards compliance. But we felt that dilapidated signs was a, we'd never really worked them before as zoning violations, so we felt that, in this case, they needed an additional time, and we, we wrote that 30 days into the ordinance.
Well, wouldn't it be just as easy just to give a citation for an individual who is in violation of what your code is, as opposed to going through this process of warnings and notices, and then ultimately, the, the retracking of that in order to come back and see whether or not the individuals have corrected it? I just see, from what I have been seeing, it just seems like it's a lot of wasted time, and a lot of times, you know, it seems like that some people get cherry-picked for enforcement, and some people don't. And some people will go on and on and on with an extension and extension and extension, and it never gets corrected, and you have community people in the community that complain and complain and say, "Well, why this person is never, ever correcting anything?" And all we keep getting is, "Well, we gave them a notice. Went back out there, they might have started the correction, so we give them another, another notice." And I just, I just think that, you know, if we're going to write something up as far as being an ordinance, let's have something that has some real meaningful effect to it. And that's my concern, and, and as I looked at all of these, this, this whole package, it's, it's like, why would we get inundated with this at one time? I, I mean, it seems like that we should have been able to, to have some time to go through an individual ordinances that address a particular area, as opposed to being, you know, swamped with all of these different ordinances at one particular time. And I, I just think that this is, I, I don't, I don't like the process of that. I think that staff sometimes consider this to be staff's issue and staff's mission, and forget the fact that you've got a council here, that we have to be the ones that have to really digest this to make a rational decision in reference to what is, and what is fair and just for the citizens, you know, that we represent. And, and I just think that this whole process, that we could, you know, these 30 days, 14 day, now, if it's 30 days, or is it 14 days?
The 30 days on dilapidated signs is, is unique to zoning, to violations. When we, when we give notices on all our other violations, they're 14 days, and so we were trying to clarify that there'd be consistency with the 14 days on everything. But the 30 days was written into the ordinance initially, when we drafted it with Sam, Councilman Bowman, we worked together to get the 30 days in there.
Well, and my question is, then, are we talking about everything is going to be 30 days, or is it going to be some 30 days and some 14 days?
The, all our, all our violations, high grass, weeds, those are all 14-day notices. Dilapidated signs are 30-day notices.
Why, why should dilapidated signs be given a longer notice than, than anything else?
The, the idea there was that we had never really enforced dilapidated signs before, and it was, we felt that they needed additional time to come into compli, give them additional time to come into compliance. It was just a decision we made as a staff to, well, to make that call with our enforcement.
That's a policy issue for council. If you want to make a-
This, this is my concern about that. I represent an area that I, I know for a fact that if this continues, then there's going to never be a real correction of some issues that I have been complaining about, that all I get is, "We gave them a notice, we gave them a notice." And we talk about all these districts, you know, that, that in reference to the downtown area, and I think that sometimes we pay more attention to some of these cherry-picked districts than we should be to the whole global part of the city. And, and I just don't think it's fair, if you're going to give someone a 14-day notice for high weeds and grass, you should give 14-day notice for dilapidation of, of signs, dilapidated signs. It's all, in my opinion, a bad eyes, an eyesore to the community and to the district. And just because we haven't enforced it, they've, they've been enforced in some areas, but some areas, they don't enforce it, and those are the areas, I think, that our city continues to see the rundown conditions, people who really don't, don't care because they don't feel like the city cares. And I'm just, I'm just, I want to go forth with something that is going to be uniform, that's going to be global, and we won't have this issue where one part of the city looks so much better than the other part of the city, and the only reason why is because we don't enforce in a uniform basis all over the city. And that's my concern, and I don't have no problems telling you. I represent Ward 7, and Ward 7 has had a continuation, dilapidated conditions, because I know for a fact that we don't, as a city, enforce as much as we should enforce. And to start this process all over again, saying that we, because we haven't enforced signs, I mean, that's an issue, that's an admission of somebody saying, "You haven't done the job." And all I'm saying is, in, in reference to, I'm, I'm just a minute, manager, I'm going to give, in, in reference to this whole process of what considered, what is considered to be a deterioration and dilapidation of, of, of issues in a community, why we can't have a uniform, we're going to give notice, why we can't have a uniform notice across the board?
Let me try something for my mayor. Councilman Kelly, two years ago, we, we didn't have an ordinance addressing dilapidated signs. So, we, this followed the billboard sign ordinance. So, in, in completing discussions with, with the industry on, on billboards, the permitting of new billboards and the removal of, of existing billboards, came the concern about the city doesn't have any ordinance related to existing signs, billboards and other signs with regards to maintenance and deterioration. So, this was, this was drafted, this ordinance. The 30-day, as I understand, a difference from the 14-day had to do with the difficulty in, in a 14-day period of identifying ownership. There's, there's the leasing on some of these signs, there's the owner. It, it was a little more extended process, and, and I think, as I recall, that had to do with extending the 14 days to the 30 days. As far as enforcement citywide, I mean, we can talk about that, but that really is a separate issue from this ordinance as far as clarifying sign requirements. So, we didn't have, Skip, we didn't, two years ago, we didn't have anything with, with regards to addressing sign maintenance. So, we did a separate ordinance, and it made sense in, in, as we moved into the enforcement of that, that that be incorporated in the overall ordinance of signs, regulating signs in the city. So, yes, we, we did extend the time, knowing the 14 days was weed, high weeds and, and other times, but for, I think it had to do with really the time that it takes, the little more extended time that it takes to pin down, is that a leasing sign, is that the, is that the owner's sign, and the proper notification to do all that in that time?
There are two things I'd like to add here, if I could. As you, as you know, we created the new department in July, and January 1st, we combined our inspectors. We used to have zoning inspectors, we had nuisance inspectors. Now, they're all cross-trained, and one of the efficiencies of the new department is to improve our inspection and our, our ability to get to violations. Now, an inspector can go out, can work multiple violations. So, that's one thing that we, we've been doing it for a little over a month now, but, you know, eventually, that's going to improve our service to the citizens. Something else that we've learned, that I've learned through my experience, is that, that we have better, a better chance of getting compliance if we work with a property owner, and even if it takes extensions, because once we write the citation, they really don't have an incentive to improve, to, to correct their violation. And so, historically, we've tried, we've always tried to, to do whatever we could to work with a property owner, to get him into compliance before we went to that citation process and sent it to court. Now, there are times that we, we have failed to, to address violations. It's not that we haven't addressed them, we just haven't followed through. Sometimes when we follow through and go to court, we still, we have a lag there that once we do the citation, there's really not anything else that we can do. So, we felt we're more effective if we, if we negotiate and work with the property owner and give them as much time as they need, as long as we see that they're working towards compliance.
All ready to vote? Sam, you want to make a motion on item 8B?
So...
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Have we thoroughly discussed 8C also, Russell? Or do you have anything?
No, we haven't, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sam, you want to make a motion on 8C? Any other comments or questions on 8C?
He has.
I did have a brief presentation.
Okay. Well, let's see the presentation before we vote.
These are, and I know there's a, there are a large number of changes here. I think you have 80-something pages of amendments, and I apologize for that. What we are trying to do, Development Services Department and Planning Department are working together to try and identify inconsistencies, errors, areas for improvement in the ordinances that we co-jointly administer, so that they are more effective and more efficient in their administration, both for us, in terms of staff who are administering the ordinances, as well as for the applicants, to make it easier for them to understand what the requirements are for them. We have been putting together a list for some period of time. We've also been taking feedback from applicants, from the committee and commission members as well, and we have put all these together today. Most of this are fairly minor corrections and, and ensuring consistency across the different design review ordinances. Each of these were crafted at separate, at separate times, and so the language doesn't necessarily correlate across each of the review commissions. So, the intent here is to make that consistent across all of them. That makes it a lot easier for us to administer, and a lot easier for the applicants to understand when they come forward with an application under any of the different design review districts. Chapter 3 I've discussed. In terms of Chapter 59, the zoning code, as I said, a lot of this is cleanup and corrections. We've had to, if, if we've made minor amendments here, that's changed the numbering, which is added to the, to the volume of, of the document. Clarifying and refining definitions, regulations and guidelines, there are a number of things in there that weren't exactly clear, either to staff in reviewing applications or to the applicants. And that includes things like the definition of ordinary maintenance and repair. That was inconsistent across the different ordinances. Historic versus historical. We also had an issue there with setbacks. We were requiring people to, to build to a 25-foot setback line. That's the citywide ordinance. That's in direct contrast to the intent of these design districts, where we want people to build up to the property line. So, there are a number of instances like that within the ordinance that, that are included in these amendments today. One of the major changes that we've made is to include administrative approval for the Bricktown Stockyards and Urban Design districts. This is a capacity that already exists with Scenic River and Downtown Design. We find this to be a, a way of more efficiently delivering our services for those minor applications that do not have a, a major impact on the design of structures. This is a way for the applicant be able to go through the process a lot quicker and cheaper than going through the full design review process with the committee. In accordance with the fee schedule recommendations from the 2006 study, we are also increasing the fees for Bricktown Stockyards and Urban Design. Those are currently at 63. The proposal within the amendments today is to increase those to $100 for administrative review. That capacity was not there previously, and then $500 for a full committee review. So, this is probably the most significant change included in the amendments, included in the ordinance. In terms of the review of this, it, it has taken some time. We've had to take these proposed amendments to each of the design review bodies. They've all, they've all reviewed it, they've provided comments back to us. We've incorporated as many of those as we, we felt possible. The Urban Design Commission did have some concerns about raising the fees, but we were trying to be consistent across the board. This went to, this final review and approval by each of the committees was in the fall of last year, and then the Planning Commission has recommended approval, which they considered in December of last year. And those are, that's essentially the, the crux of the amendments, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Any other comments or questions for Russell? We have a motion in a second on it. Everybody ready to vote? All right. Russell, thanks for all your work on this. I know it was tedious work and time.
That was staff. I mean, as, as I said, the intent is to try and come back at least once a year, and more frequently if necessary, depending on the urgency the amendments require.
We appreciate your work. Thank the staff for us. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8D, this has to do with the selling of the bonds. Bids opened at 8:30 this morning, I assume. I hope we had at least one bidder.
Actually, we have good news and bad news. The good news is that we had 12 bidders, and the bad news is we had 12 bidders, so we're still evaluating that, and we are not ready to proceed with that item at this point. Hopefully, we will be later in the meeting.
Well, 12 people, that's, that seems high.
It is high.
Yeah. Yeah.
That will serve us well.
So, do we need to do anything with this right now?
No, but we can... D and E will have to be moved to the end of the meeting.
Okay. So, just do that by saying so. All right. Okay, we'll come back and deal with item 8D and item 8E. We'll move on to item 8F, which is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have a motion in a second. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. We have a motion in a second on item 8G. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed here? All right, cast your votes on 8G. Passed unanimously. Item 8H has to do with the new NCAA suggested requirement for our consideration of NCAA events. This is, at some level, a prerequisite for continuing to bid for NCAA events. We can get further discussion if you'd like to. It seems fairly self-explanatory.
All sports is submitting on a number of events are listed in the resolution, and we've never done this before. This is a new requirement of NCAA, and they're asking for a resolution of support from the hosting city.
Could somebody give me a quick answer to what is ambush marketing?
Ambush marketing is, it's still a little bit of a fuzzy issue to me, but it's for people to come and try to take advantage of the event and do events that take advantage of the crowd and being down there. It would be somebody that's setting up a large display, you know, in the street or something like that that we would want in control.
Do you want to do a picture of yourself doing something?
Well, I'll tell you another example. It could be someone holding up a sign for commercial gain in the middle of a game, trying to be on television. That would be an example of ambush marketing. But there's all sorts of examples. If you held up a sign that said, "Vote for Pete White," at a game, that would be ambush marketing.
It wouldn't be ambush.
Perhaps not. All right, how about a motion then on 8H? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a short-term loan to accommodate some cash flow for TIF number 2.
Sure, that's exactly what it was, and this has been through the Economic Development Trust.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8I. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes on 8J. Passed unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion for that one? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8L, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Item passed unanimously. Item 8M, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, again. Passed unanimously. And item 8N, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. And that one will also be discussed in executive session, so that puts us on to item 8O. These are claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8O? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes on 8O. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is items from council. We'll start with an item that Sam originated. This has to do with the electronic message display signs. Sam?
And it just sets forth a year from the effective date of the ordinance that we, I think, for the general public concern with this new direction in signs, that we are looking at it in a year's time, we're going to stop, evaluate it, and see if perhaps it does have any unintended impact, and then review and go forward at that time. Mayor, I would just suggest that, separate from the resolution, might just, as a kind of a tracking, as we get to it a year's time, perhaps the council get in after six months just the number of permits that have been, the new permits have been issued. Give us a little idea how it's moving.
And perhaps some relevance to if that's increased or decreased?
Yes.
Over time? Okay. All right, so we need to vote on this resolution. Sam, do you want to make a motion?
I got a, well, I had a question. And I support the resolution. I don't have any problem with it at all. But I was curious why we felt the need to revisit the EMD sign ordinance, but we didn't feel the need to revisit the billboard ordinance in a year later to see what the impact was on it. Just a curiosity question more than anything else.
I think it's a good one. I've asked since this discussion, and we'll be getting here in a week or so, an update on the two years. It's a little late. It doesn't give us the year review, but just what has happened with respect to new billboards and permits to also take billboards out. So, staff is going to be providing that to council in the next week or two.
And of course, you know, you all can ask for this anytime you'd like. This resolution is just kind of a reminder, I think, so it kind of formalizes the process. All right, Sam, you made a motion. A second. All right, cast your votes on item 9. Passed unanimously. Gary, you want to continue with items from council? All right, Sam, anything else? Larry?
Your honor, I'd like to encourage the neighbors at Windsor Hills to attend a neighborhood meeting this Saturday at Windsor Hills Elementary School at 10:00 a.m. And I'd like you to pass along, if you would, Jim, my appreciation to the police department. Sergeant Epple is coming out on his day off to provide training for patrol. And I'd like to encourage the neighbors to be there because there is a need to intensify our citizen patrols, to alleviate crime. And that was kind of pointed out to me in just the TV coverage just yesterday about the Cadillac Escoaids in Nichols Hills that had their tires stolen during the night. The bad guys are out there, and our citizens need to help our police out. They're doing a great job. And in that same vein, I'd like you to pass along, if you would, to the chief, my appreciation to Major Gunsor in Santa Fe Division for his response to a citizen complaint during the snowstorm that he and his officers resolved in a very expeditious manner, and I really appreciate the way they go the extra mile. Thank you, your honor.
Okay. Pete? Brian?
Well, during the first snowstorm, there wasn't much said because all the cars were stranded, and it was a logistical nightmare. But I do have to bring up the last snowstorm that we just finished. In South Oklahoma City, Thursday, I did not see a truck or any evidence that a truck has been, had been out there to attend to the roads. Friday, I did not see one truck or any evidence that a truck had been out there, and I was out both days. Saturday, I did not see a truck all day long, and I was out. It wasn't until late Saturday night that I saw evidence that there had been trucks out there. Saturday morning, I was in rural Cleveland County in Slaughterville, Oklahoma, and they had better roads than South Oklahoma City did. Now, I don't know if that's a confusion with the county or whose responsibility it is, but it's one of those issues that one time, I can understand. But the second time, in a matter of a month, it's unacceptable. You're talking about roadways that are major thoroughfares. Western Avenue had not been touched until Saturday late. And I still didn't see a truck. I just saw the evidence that somebody had been through there. So, that needs to be addressed. I mean, hopefully, I can concur with the mayor, that hopefully, we have seen the last major snow of the season. But for that to continue to happen, and it seemed to be a pattern, is really unacceptable. And I would like to make sure that we have that covered for next time.
Councilman, we have GPS in all the trucks, and I will provide you when the trucks were in Oklahoma City, at what time, and where they did. I will get that information to you.
Okay. Meg?
Thank you, mayor. Very briefly, I just wanted to mention last Wednesday, the Community Literacy Center had an awards luncheon recognizing Sarkis Foundation, and Patty Mello is their outstanding community volunteer. They just do, Executive Director Becky Odell does such a fabulous job helping adults in our community that can't read or read at a very low level, learn to read and integrate themselves in the community, and they do very fine work, and I just wanted to recognize that. Heritage Hills had their annual meeting on snowy Saturday. We had great turnout. And they gave a report on Wilson School and the updates with maps for kids and what's going on at Wilson. And the Heritage Hills neighborhood has made the largest private donation on record to one of our public elementary schools to add four arts classrooms and some enhancements to that project, and I want to thank the neighborhood for their support at the school.
All right. Skip?
First of all, I would like to commend the city and all those individuals who work for the department that has to do anything with the streets. I was impressed with the level and the foresight they had as it relates to this past storm. I'm just challenged with this one question, is that when would we go back and look at adding some streets to the snow route? I think that's the biggest concern that some citizens have, that, you know, they don't understand why Britton Road is on the snow route, Hefner Road is not, 122nd is not. And I'm sure, as Councilman Walsh stated, there may be some areas in the south part that's not on the snow route. And I just think that, you know, it's time, we see obviously that Oklahoma City is getting more than one snow a year. And the amount of snow and the amount of development that has occurred in this city and different parts of the city and the traffic, that I think it's time for us to go back and look and see whether or not some of these other streets could be added as snow routes. But I think they did a fantastic job. I think the number of accidents that was reported clearly, you know, shows that not only the citizens paid more attention this time, but also the fact that the city got out ahead of the storm and was prepared for what was to come in the future. And so, I commend them for that. My other concern, well, that was my concern. I would like to thank the mayor for accepting the invitation to attend the State of the Union message. I think that was honorable on your part. I know you received a lot of probably negative comments as it relates to your presence there. But I can assure you that a lot of people was watching the State of the Union message that probably didn't so much support President Barack Obama, but they supported you and was there to see your presence in the box and your initiative as it relates to weight loss and obesity in Oklahoma City. It is nice to know that it has gotten national attention all the way to the White House, and we hope that becomes a partnership that will develop programs for our city to address such a serious issue as the obesity among our teenagers and our children in Oklahoma City. And so, mayor, I thank you for, and I was delighted to see the comments that you made of your observation of the three branches of government, and I would have loved to have been there. So, thank you so much. That's all my comments.
Thanks, man.
I would like to say that I have had some contact with representatives of the Oklahoma City, the State Bonding Association, as we, I think, are getting ready to do a presentation as it relates to the city issues of the clerk's office with the city for issues concerning making bonds after 7:00 or if that matter goes forward. And I did invite, you know, a couple of the representatives or whoever else wanted to be here to have some comments. It's a lot. Thank you.
All right. City manager reports.
Well, that's a good segue, Mr. Kelly, into the first report on the presentation regarding to the municipal court issue regarding the hours of operation. As part of the mid-year reductions, there were a number of things that were proposed, and one of the things that was proposed was the limits of the hours of municipal courts. And Stacy Davis, administrator for municipal courts, is here this morning to discuss that issue with us.
Good morning. The current hours at our public counter are 7:00 a.m. until midnight. In the past, we were open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But several years ago, due to budget reductions, we reduced our hours to 7:00 to midnight. When we're not open, the police department at their information desk collects jail bonds for people that are in jail to ensure that they're released in a timely manner. Our public counter functions between 7:00 and midnight, including taking bonds, include taking bonds for jail personnel. We also take regular fine and bond payments from citizens who have a traffic ticket or a parking ticket. The Oklahoma state law allows the police department to accept jail bonds when courts are closed. The police department obviously does that. We went through that process a couple of years ago. To meet our mid-year reduction, we proposed to close at 7:00 p.m. instead of midnight. We would still remain open from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. We proposed cutting three customer service reps that work the public counter operations in order to meet our reduction. That was a savings to the city of about $150,000. We worked with the police chief on this reduction to see if they could help us out with the jail bonds between 7:00 p.m. and midnight. The police chief worked with us. We thank him for his support, and he said that they could accomplish that at the information desk with the personnel that they had. So, anybody who was under arrest in jail or any person who was arrested on the street by an officer who was on their way to jail but had the ability to post a bond could stop at the information desk rather than the courthouse, post the bond, and then go on their way. Anybody who was in jail, that jail bond could be completed by an officer at the information desk. It's very common for courts to close. Most of the courts that we contacted closed at 5:00. We contacted Dallas, Fort Worth, Little Rock, Tulsa, Edmond, Phoenix, Wichita, and Columbus, Ohio. We found one court that was open until 7:00. We found one court that was open until 10:00. And in all situations, when the court was closed, their jail bonds were taken by the police department or jail personnel. Oklahoma City is the only court in the metro area that has extended hours. We were the only one in a large metro area that was open as long as we were, including weekends. Over the past several years, we've met the needs of people paying regular fines and bonds on traffic tickets and minor criminal violations and parking tickets by using automation like the internet, paying on the internet, paying by mail, paying by phone, coming in on Saturday or Sunday, and also before work and after work. We've tried to make sure that all of the work that's performed by the three individuals that we cut, which were actually vacant positions throughout the organization, all that work was done in a way that citizens could still make their payment and be served well, including the jail bonds being taken at the information desk. So, the aim of this proposal was to be able to reduce our costs, but not reduce our service levels. So, by taking bonds at the information desk and having the additional ways people can pay without having to come down here, we think that this was probably the best solution to our mid-year cuts. The activity, actually, I started when I started 30-some-odd years ago. It was on second shift, which is this, and the activity at 7:00 dropped off greatly. It dropped off greatly at 7:00, and it still does. People that are downtown, when they get off work, they want to come by on their way home. They still have that opportunity unless they work until 8:00 or 9:00, and in that case, they can pay by internet. So, this is some information about why we chose what we chose. Any other option would have included some daytime reductions, which is the meat of our operation. It's when most attorneys come in, most citizens come in for court, and all of the judicial actions have to be done. So, we thought this was probably the best, most cost-effective way to cut the $150,000 that this accounted for. So, that's general information about what we did and why we did it.
All right. Any questions for Stacy? We have someone who signed up to speak.
Stacy, the $150,000, is this what you say that the city is saving by operating after 7:00 at the information desk at the police department?
The chief is in charge of the people that are at the information desk, and he assured us that they're already... us that they're already at their job and they have the ability to take these bonds. So, that was a straightforward reduction for us to be able to do. So, it was an actual cost savings.
So, there's...
The $150,000 was for the elimination of three positions in the municipal court's office.
Three positions?
Yes, sir.
So, that is, if this goes into effect, three persons will be eliminated from the city's...
Three positions would be eliminated. I don't think they're currently held.
They're vacant, but yes.
They're vacant.
They're vacant right now. In addition, we put the implementation date of this proposal until March so that we could notify anybody that got a new ticket of our new hour so that they wouldn't come in and think we were open, find that we were closed.
Let me see if I understand this. An individual driving under suspension is an arrestable offense. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, an 18, 19-year-old kid has an issue with his driver's license, gets picked up at 8:00 at night under this new proposal. That individual is immediately taken to the county jail, right?
If the officer chooses to do so, yes.
Well, I mean, by law, he's supposed to arrest him.
Well, I don't know the actual law part of the police...
Well, just for the scenario part, the hypothetical.
Okay.
So, the individual goes to jail, and he calls a bail bondsman. The bail bondsman's going to go to the police department, to the information desk, and submit his bond paperwork to a police officer. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then how does that paperwork get back over to the county jail?
The police officer calls over to the jail, and the individual is released, much like we do it when we take the bond. Then in the morning, we pick up all of the packets of information, if any bonds were posted that night, and then we further process those.
And we're not taking up any additional time from a police officer from doing other work there at the information desk?
According to the chief, they have the time to do so. Now, the way in which a police officer takes the bond is a much-reduced way of doing business as what the court employees do because we finish the work the next morning. So, the officer is dealing more with accepting the paperwork, calling the jail, and releasing the individual. We handle all of the case updates and all of the processing of paperwork after that. So, we handle the work the next day. So, the amount of time to release a person with an officer is much, much less.
So, what we do is, we take a pure civilian position and place it and burden a uniformed officer with doing nothing but paperwork for a bail bondsman, right?
No, I don't know about the burden part. I know that... Oh, Stacy. If I could answer that for you. We have to have people at the information desk. They're there. We used to do a lot more at the information desk when we used to release vehicles that were impounded. That process was changed several years ago, so they're not as busy actually doing impounds now because people can directly go pick their cars up. Officers at the information desk have plenty of time, plenty of time, more than enough time, to take those bonds. So, it really is a more efficient way of doing this. I mean, he's allowed, he's able to cut his budget. There's very few bonds taken at nighttime after 7:00, after midnight. Right now, we're already taking bonds because staff was cut several years ago, and we've been doing it from midnight on, after midnight, for quite some time now. All we're doing is extending those hours now up from 7:00 to midnight, and I can assure you that it is not an extra burden. It actually gives them something to do in many cases at the information desk.
But I guess what I'm asking is, would we be better served with a uniformed officer out here catching these people that are committing real bad acts in the community? And if this is just information, why we don't have a civilian person just giving out information?
We did away, we used to. We did away with our civilian personnel at the information desk probably five, six years ago because of security issues in our building. It's a 24/7 building. We have people working in that building. And at nighttime, we have no police officers, and it is a security issue. So, the decision was made for security purposes for us to have police officers working at information desk to make sure that building is secure.
I'm not going to ask any other questions right now because there are some people here that would like to state their concerns, so I'll defer to them.
All right. Larry Teeden has signed up to speak. Larry?
Good morning. I'm a criminal defense lawyer, and I'm also general counsel for the Oklahoma Bail Bondsman Association. All the bail bondsmen in Oklahoma City are members of the Oklahoma Bail Bondsman Association. Based upon what I'm told, they've been having some difficulty just in the responses, and this is something maybe I should take up with Chief City on an informal basis, but asking the officers to comply with things in a timely, acceptable manner, I think, is one of the problems that they've had. And the other issue is not so much on fresh charges, new charges that somebody incurs, but when somebody's arrested, maybe they're arrested on felony charges and booked into the Oklahoma County portion of the jail, they can bond out on those 24/7. But if they have an old warrant from the Oklahoma City charges, they can't do anything about that. That has to wait until 7:00 the next morning. And sometimes when people are in from out of town, how to state to bond somebody out, obviously, that backs up. It makes it very difficult for them to conduct business on one person at one time. That may not be y'all's concern. I know this is a cost-cutting measure, and I know you all have probably surveyed how many people are affected by this and how many bed spaces above and beyond what you all contract for are affected by this and what the costs are. And I assume you've come to the conclusion that this is cost-effective. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, and as I said, I'll take some of this up with Chief City if he'll talk to me. I hope he will. I think so. Thank you.
All right. Larry, thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Just the presentation at this point?
That's correct.
Let me ask a question real quick. Is the fees that we charge at the court, are they cost-recovery based? Is that kind of the mindset?
Law requires that.
Okay. If they're open longer hours, then the costs would go up, correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So, if they all want this to be open 24 hours, can we not just increase the fees?
Theoretically, that's always an option, to increase the fees to generate more revenue. Yes.
Okay.
Could we get the numbers as it relates to the number of bonds in the last, say, for the last year that are posted after 7:00 as far as the city bonds? Because one of the concerns I have is, we pay per bed space at the county jail. Is that right, Mr. Manager?
Actually, well, we have a contract on that that we guarantee a certain number of beds, and then we pay per, we have a minimum amount of 180... Chief? Chief? Chief City? We have a minimum amount of beds we pay for over at the county jail of 180. What's the number we have?
165 a day.
165 beds. So, we pay for that regardless. And then if we have inmates beyond that, we pay...
In fact, we changed the contract last year. It's 165 regardless.
Flat rate of 165.
We base it on an average year-to-year.
So, if you go over 165, what happens?
Nothing. We pay the same amount. It used to be where we would pay based on how many we went over on an average, but we changed that last year.
Well, I would like to see the numbers as it relates to the number of bonds that are posted, you know, after 7:00.
Between 7:00 and midnight. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions, Jim, on the city manager reports?
No, the sales tax reports in there, and those numbers are the same numbers we went over last week at the budget workshop. And we do have a report that we did reconfirm our AAA rating with standards and pores and our AA1 rating with Moody's, which I'm sure we'll elaborate here in just a minute because I see our financial folks have entered the room, and I'm sure they've got results on the bonds from this morning.
All right. That'll allow us to go back and deal with item 8D and item 8E. Good morning, Laura.
Kenton Sudo is passing out the revised items that reflect the bids that we received this morning. The first item is an award of purchase of $64.4 million, actually, $64,420,000 in general obligation bonds. This morning, we did receive 12 bids, which is a record amount for us. We've never received that many bids, so I apologize for the delay, but it does take a little bit of time to analyze those bids. And I do believe that that is a reflection of our good credit quality, and I'll talk more about that when we get to the city manager's report. So, this item is to approve an award of purchase for $64,420,000 in general obligation bonds. The analysis of the bids indicates that the lowest interest rate was bid by Robert W. Baird &amp; Company for a true interest cost of 3.469766. It's recommended that the award be made to Robert W. Baird &amp; Company for that true interest cost of 3.469766.
Okay, I'm just looking through the bids myself.
The bids are attached to the item, each of the bidder's bids. The first one should be on the back of the council memo and would reflect the winning bidder.
Laura, do you remember off the top of your head how this compares to last year's issuance?
I believe that last year's was 3.83.
So, it's down a little bit.
Yes. It's down a significant amount in the bond market. I don't think so. Dennis is going to pass out a bid tabulation that reflects the top nine bidders.
Laura, could you take us through one of these bids and explain the accumulated totals at the bottom, total interest cost, the premium, the net interest cost? What does all that mean? How's that break down for us?
Actually, I'm going to invite our financial advisor to come and do that for you.
All right.
Dennis, this is Dennis Whaley with PFM.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dennis Whaley with PFM. The winning bid was from Robert W. Baird. The way this breaks down is, you see in the column that says amount, that's the amount of principal you're paying off each year. The total would be $64,420. The final bond in 2030 is $10,100. What they did was turn that into a term bond, and they'll pay that off, part of in 2028, part in 2029, and part in 2030. But the total will still be 64,420. The column that says coupon, that's the coupon rate you will pay on those bonds to the holder. Now, what happens down at the bottom, you'll see a number called premium. That's the extra money you received with this bond sale because the coupons are higher than the yield. So, the coupon may be in the first year 2%, but the bonds will be sold at 1%. So, the price will be higher than par or 100. So, that difference you receive in additional proceeds. When you boil it all down, your overall rate is 3.469 that you pay when you blend all the maturities.
And that was the lowest interest rate that was offered?
Yes, sir. The next closest bid was 3.49.
Okay.
I would say, you should be very proud of this. You have a very high bond rating, AAA, AA1. Received 12 bids. Says a lot about the city, the way it's run, that people want these bonds, that they can sell these bonds to the public. So, you should be very proud of that. You should be very proud.
Looks good to me. Anybody have any comments or questions for staff? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything else, Laura, before we vote?
No, I'm just ready to talk about the ordinance, which is the next item.
Okay. Who else is going to vote on 8D?
Yes, sir.
All right. Cast your votes on 8D. Pass unanimously. Item 8E is the, this authorizes the issuance of the bonds.
This is the ordinance that allows for the bonds to be issued. I really have no other comments about this except that this does prescribe the form of the bonds, which is included in here in the ordinance that we passed out to you, which is not always known until the day of the bids because of the term bonds and things like that. And also establishes the paying agent, which was approved by you earlier today in the consent docket.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
All right. Well, we'll vote first, and then we'll vote on the emergency. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Cast your votes on the emergency. Pass unanimously. Good?
If I might just take a minute to talk about the city manager's report that's in your packet today. It does address the issuance of the AAA bond rating by standard and pores and the affirmation of our AA1 Moody's rating, which was issued with a stable outlook, which I think is a true compliment to our management. I'll talk more about the standard and pores rating because it is the superior of the two at this point. I wanted to point out that some of the things that affected our AAA rating were our diverse and expanding regional economy in spite of the downturn in the national economy. Oklahoma City's economy is still expanding, although at a much smaller rate than any of us would really like. It is a good reflection on Oklahoma City and our region as a whole. Our ongoing redevelopment of the downtown area, consistently strong financial performance and position coupled with conservative financial management practices, our low debt level with rapid amortization, and that, of course, has to do with state law that requires us to put our principal payments on a level of principal. And low debt and the city's limited revenue raising flexibility, which has in the past been an issue for the rating agencies. This year was not as big an issue because our property values in Oklahoma have stayed at a good level in spite of what's happening in the rest of the country. So, I feel very strongly that this conservative nature of our financial management practices has been a big advantage to us. The other day, after our council workshop, Councilman McAtee asked me about the value of this rating. It's very difficult to pin down exactly what a AAA rating might mean on any given day. The market is fluid. Many factors influence it. But when we did this calculation on the basis of what traded in the market last year with our AAA and compared to that, what we see is that this issue, this sale of $64.4 million, the AAA rating has an opportunity to save us about $1,000,500 on that sale. And over the life of our whole authorization, our whole 2007 authorization, the savings could be around $20 million. And those are savings that directly affect our taxpayers, directly affect the ability to keep property taxes low and still have our infrastructure improvements move along at a very steady, manageable pace. That's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, congratulations on the bond rating again. Anybody else? All right. Laura, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from you?
No, sir.
All right. We have executive session. We'll be back. Anyone here wishing to be heard? Okay. We'll be back.